Making that real. And that's the way to address the air quality. So absolutely entirely support this proposal, this motion.
Thank you very much. councillor Ross.
Thank you, Chair. It's interesting to hear what councillor Butland said about stationary traffic, increasing the bad air quality, if you like. And yet, this authority is backing a traffic mitigation scheme, a huge traffic mitigation scheme in Stratford, around Alston Manor Island, where they're actually putting in four sets of traffic lights, which will actually increase standing traffic and increase bad air quality. And there is no evidence to say, they haven't come up with any evidence, neither of the developers who, of course, are paying for this, to say that air quality will get better or worse. I suspect, quite rightly, as you say, standing traffic, it will get worse. And I think it's very sad that this authority has allowed a major developer to spend two and a half million on four sets of traffic lights that actually nobody in Stratford wants. Thank you.
Thank you very much. councillor Maurice Jones.
Thank you, Chairman. I must say, I hadn't given a great deal of thought to this motion before it was put before us today. So now I'm trying to come to an opinion on the subject of air pollution. Now, recently, we've been warned of the dangerous emissions of diesel-engined vehicles. In the past, for as long as I can remember, we've been encouraged to go away from petrol-powered vehicles to diesel. And of course, all of our commercial vehicles, I should say, without exception, are all powered by diesel fuel. We are aware of the particulate emissions from these vehicles, particularly when they're stationary. But I understand that there is a certain amount of influence from the European Union for us to go away from diesel engines and to alternative fuels. Now, the only feasible alternatives, in my opinion, are petrol or liquid petroleum. Electric cars and particularly electric heavy commercial vehicles, I think, are something in the distant future. What would help me is, as we've had an estimate of the number of people who may die from pollution, what would be the likely death rate if heavy commercial vehicles were converted to petrol and they were carrying perhaps 500 litres of petrol and had a head-on collision? How many people might perish in such conflagrations? Because if we do convert to petrol, these dreadful accidents will happen. Has any thought been given to that? I'd like to know before I make up my mind on this motion.
Thank you very much. councillor Weston.
Thank you, Chair. I totally agree and support this motion. One of the things that sort of strikes me as really bizarre is that sometimes I sit on meetings of regulatory and we consider planning applications and we're really concerned about the welfare of certain endangered species. And probably quite rightly. But we'll get into all sorts of studies being done into the impact on that little area of, yes, indeed. What I found extraordinary was like last summer, when local plans were being submitted, certainly in Warwick District, was that that authority had chosen not to do a health impact assessment of their plan. So there we were, looking at whatever it was, 12,900 properties, new homes, looking at a consequence of something like 19,000 vehicles, probably in ownership amongst those 12,900 homes, and then the number of journeys typically per day that would be undertaken by those homes. That was off the agenda and it certainly was not something that they wanted to consider or were urged to consider by them as an authority, until, as councillor Holland mentioned, we asked for public health, Warwickshire, to get involved and proposed that to Warwick District Council. So these things are really important, but they are. They're important because it's joined up. And the way things are structured at the moment between all the authorities, it doesn't make sense. And the sooner we get to some sort of better joined-up thinking amongst local authority, the better. Just to sort of come back on what was being made by, the point being made by councillor Maurice Jones. In Germany, they use hydrogen buses, hydrogen-powered buses and other alternative fuels. They are super-clean vehicles, they are big vehicles, they can be done. And electric vehicles obviously are out there too. But there are new technologies coming through, which means that there are cleaner vehicles, not just on the horizon, but with us today. It's all about appetite, about what we want to do. So, yes, very much welcome the motion, I'll be supporting it. And it's just another example of where joined-up thinking across authorities should have been further upstream. And we would have got to this earlier, but very much welcome the motion.
Thank you very much. councillor Fowler.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I welcome the comments that have been made so far. And for my neck of the wood, and I refer to councillor Lee as well, for our neck of the wood and a number of other members as well, that how much we've welcomed the work that our staff here at the county council have worked with those people with HS2. Because when you talk about air quality and cars, the horror that still brings forth to my division is a new railway station with 10,000-car parking capacity. And that's including, then you've got to add on the construction vehicles, as was mentioned by my colleague over there, about Stonebridge, the A45, the M6 junction four, which will be doubled in size. And then you've got the Dunton Island further up in councillor Lee's patch. So this is very much welcome, Chairman, because we do know of the impacts of air quality that once HS2 and everything else has finally been laid to rest in our area, air quality will be high on the agenda for most people.
Thank you very much. councillor Frazier.
Thank you, Chair. I'm a commuter cyclist. And in the town where I live, Stratford, I think I probably cut out at least four to possibly eight car journeys a day by cycling up and down to the town. On those cycle rides, I think I must absorb a huge amount of airborne pollutants as I actually struggle in the fairly dense traffic, particularly across Crockton Bridge. Stratford Town, I think, like many towns in Warwickshire, should be cycle-friendly. And actually, it's not. It's incredibly difficult to drive, to cycle from the south to the north and the north to the south. And I talked to a number of people in Stratford who would love to be able to cycle to work, to get their children to cycle to school instead of having to take them in cars. And the car traffic jams, morning and evening, are fairly intense. And we could get children to cycle safely. But when you live in a town where Suston's 41 route actually is routed across a pavement, across which it is forbidden to cycle, when you have pedestrian crossings which are not synchronized, so in fact, to cross two or three roads takes a considerable amount of time, when you have pedestrian cycle shared ways which are not of a standard width, so it makes fairly difficult sharing between pedestrians and cyclists. And in fact, I prefer to cycle on the road because I have priority to cycle across roads that come in from the left. I would make a plea that if we are actually going to seriously get people out of their cars, we have seriously got to work out how we are going to use our planning system to make sure that we put the investment into proper, safe cycle routes across the county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have three more speakers, then we'll go to the second. councillor Clark.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm not going to rehash what's been said and I agree with most of what's been said, particularly councillor Weston, in relation to working with our districts and boroughs. I think it's most important to say the monitoring authorities for these, this equipment, that we actually have those inputs and come back to the report. It is due, as you quite rightly say. So I do broadly support this and I look forward to the outcomes from the report. But I do feel that the districts and boroughs do need to put in as well in relation to this, to ensure that we get the proper outcomes.
Thank you very much. councillor Seckham.
Thank you. I just wanted to pick up on councillor Warner's perspective, which was this should be about health, which I do agree with and I think it absolutely should be. And I thought it might be helpful and perhaps a little informative to say that the Health and Wellbeing Board has had a couple of, or three, meetings that have been really focused on the role that districts can play as contributing towards the health quality of Warwickshire and how we can drive together to try to forward plan the opportunities in parts of our communities. I absolutely agree, I think it should be. I think there is some really good work going with planning teams, both in the county and with the districts and boroughs. But it also needs to feed into the wider councils and I suggest the councils that make part of the Health and Wellbeing Board really need to see actually what the best benefit this can do to achieve it. Our planning needs to be talking about how we have communities for the future. We know that by 2030, over a quarter of our population will be over 65. And what we inherit now and how we develop the communities is clearly important about the lifestyle and the expectancy that they can have. So it might be wider pavements, it might be more green spaces, talking about how people get around. You know, many of whom are going to be on mobility scooters, not just on bicycles. So I think it is really important and can be a strategic issue. And I think that we are aware of it already and we are finding the right routes to make this work. But we need a joined-up county-wide strategy that makes sense.
Thank you very much. councillor Lewis.
Yeah, I'd just like to ask Peter Butland a question as to what's actually been done on the Eton Bridge then? Because the pollution there, as we've just heard, is actually very high and I don't see any improvement in that area. And I also feel that the cuts to the bus passes to children, I was on the safer routes to school tasking finish last year and it actually highlighted that when you take the bus passes away from more and more children.
I think, councillor, that might be a question you can ask councillor Butland during the questions for portfolio holders, rather than part of this debate. And then you might get an answer.
But it hasn't pelt the amount of traffic on the road.
Yep, sure, yep. But I think there might be a better way to get the answer. So now councillor Condecor.
Thank you very much, Chair. The actual statistics that they've worked out now is it's 269 people a year are dying early in Warwickshire due to pollution. Not all road pollution, but obviously that's the biggest cause. And the science has changed quite a lot. And this is why the motion came out, because we had a recent law case at the Supreme Court, trying to force the British government to take more notice of air pollution. Say, 269 is the estimated deaths in Warwickshire, mostly as a result actually of PM2.5s, which is the very finest particulate matter, which does come from diesel vehicles in the majority. And what we measure at the moment is NO2, NOx, the nitrogen pollution, which obviously correlates partly with where the particulates are, but isn't an exact measure. But obviously, it is very important. And it is where traffic is slow-moving, stop-start, as in Eton School, et cetera. And we do need to think more about the design of road systems so we actually get the traffic flowing smoothly. We talked about traffic lights briefly. If traffic lights are holding traffic back and it's in the evening, there's no traffic, we could be making the pollution worse. Yeah, we should be thinking about part-time traffic lights or intelligent traffic lights, so actually trying to manage the amount of traffic that's hanging around, rather than having a strict, you wait there 60 seconds, even if there's nothing coming. There's a lot of issues about diesel engines. And one of the things that is coming is hybrid diesel buses. So actually, although the buses run on diesel, they're actually, when they're inching forward in traffic jams, actually using electric recovered from the braking from the diesel. So there's a lot of technology. And actually, with 269 people dying a year from the pollution, worrying about petrol explosions, I think, needs to be put in context. As I say, I think electric hybrids will be the one, the ways we're going forward, and tightening up on emission controls. But it's a whole package. It goes from the education, making primary schools being built when we do a new development. It goes from the safer routes to school. It's definitely needs to be the health, our county health officers commenting on planning applications, where they're going to create lots of pollution. And it's really pleasing to see actually councillors from across the political spectrum and across Warwickshire understanding that air pollution isn't a religious item, it's actually down to good science. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And councillor Childers, do you want to wind up?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for all the constructive comments from across the chamber. Just to pick up very briefly on a couple of things. Just, I want to recognise the work already done by the Warwick councillors in bringing public health and highways together. I think that's really important and to be commended. So thank you for that. And I look forward to that continuing and coming to fruition. Councillor Frazier put very well the work about the actual needing to prioritise road space, of which obviously is a finite amount, to ensure that junctions are designed in a way that do get people walking and cycling to improve air quality. And that's why I was so pleased to hear councillor Butland talk about, and he said it in the context of planning, saying that cycling and public transport is a primary concern in planning applications. And so, really pleased to hear that. Because these, this is, there are some difficult choices here that we do need to take a lead, that where the rejunctions, there is only a finite amount of road space that we have to divvy up between the road, the car user and the cycle user and the pedestrian. So it's not always straightforward choices that have to be made. And that's why we need the political leadership on this. But I just wanted to finish by picking up on what councillor Warner said in terms of that actually this is something that can be done. This is not pie in the sky that we can't, that we can't touch. I don't know about other districts, but in Warwick Districts, over 60% of people either are within 2.5 miles of their school or their workplace. Most of that traffic is incredibly locally generated. If people are given the right options to be able to feel they can get around safely in other ways, then actually, we have a win-win in so many things. And we can't have people in our county continuing to die from the poor air quality. And so I just thank you for your support today and ask you to support the motion.
Thank you very much. Shall we now move to the vote? All those in favour of the motion, please show. That is unanimous, so the motion is carried. We now move on to item 12, members' question time. There are three questions I have here, which have been submitted already. They are allowed supplementary questions. We then go to open questions to the portfolio holder and the portfolio holder will just give an answer, one way or another. So we'll start off with these three questions that we have. The first one is safety of pedestrians and cyclists. In fact, councillor Peter Butland will be answering it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair. This question is about the tragic accident on the A44. I won't read out the whole question, but it was basically asking what's been done after the coroner asked Warwickshire County Council to take action to pedestrians at the site.
Thank you. It's an unfortunate event, but I won't go into the details of that because there was rather extenuating circumstances surrounding the accident. Following the coroner's inquest, a Regulation 28 report was issued to Warwickshire County Council by the Majesties Coroner. The report called for a study to be carried out into a feasibility of providing a footway link between Walsingham Drive and Sutherland Drive and to introduce measures to deter pedestrians from using this section of the A44. A scheme which included pedestrian barriers and signing for pedestrians to advise them of the dangers of walking along the A44 and to advise them of safer alternative routes has been completed. A feasibility report was commissioned through Atkins Consultancy. This looked at the route and whether it would be possible and safe to introduce a pedestrian-stroke-cycling route adjacent to the A44. The study concluded that a route could be provided set back from the dual carriageway. I must point out, we don't want to encourage people to run down, walk down either side of that dual carriage. It's not an ideal place to walk. This requires potential land acquisition, a signalised crossing point and barrier guard railings to be introduced. The report estimated the cost of the construction work alone to be in the order of £500,000. In addition, there would need to be a cost for a potential land acquisition, design work, traffic management and possibly service diversions and drainage. The cost for these elements is estimated to be an additional £250,000. The total cost of providing a safer route for pedestrians and cyclists is estimated to be in the order of £750,000. With the current allocation of £350,000 per year for casual reduction schemes and the need to prioritise this funding to all locations where significant numbers of accidents are occurring on a regular basis, it is unlikely that funding will be failed to introduce any further measures at this location. Although there has been on one other collision involving a pedestrian, serious injuries since 2012, there are other sites with significantly more accidents that are given a higher priority. The current cluster site list has 44 locations with six or more injury accidents in a three-year period. Some of these are high-profile locations where multiple accidents are occurring on a frequent basis. So we're in a difficult situation where we have to kind of prioritise where we spend the money that we've got. So that's the response. Thank you very much. Do you want to follow on, Christian?
Yeah, thank you for that sum of money because it's useful to know it's £750,000. It actually seems to sort of money we should be trying to get out of developers because we've actually got a lot of employment sites at Bemuda and lots of housing. Can we actually do more to actually get this happening? Because I'd rather pay £750,000 and have someone else die. So can we chase this?
It is one of the things that was itemised, because we had a meeting with the mother of Kerry Dean and it was one of the things that was itemised as a possible source of money. But it would be easier once we've got a new local planning from Nanteton Bedworth as to know where possible industrial development is to go because it's a location for that sort of thing. Once we've that, then we can target possible 106 money. Any supplementary questions? Right, we'll move on to the next one, which is question two, recycling service in Nanteton Bedworth. councillor Condecor.
Thank you, Chair. This is to Geoff Clarkson, he's still head of environment, yeah. Since the start of April, the recycling service in Nanteton Bedworth has been rejecting around 500 bins a day some days.
Not true. Not true.
And advising residents to transfer the black bin, the contaminants into the black bin waste. This fiasco seems to be a result of a significant change to what's being accepted in the brown-litened bins without a significant education campaign. Most of the residents are very unhappy with the Borough Council's actions. Does the portfolio holder for the Environment agree with me that responsibility for waste collection should be transferred from the Nanteton Bedworth Borough Council to some other body that has the time, that has the time and the proper joint, sorry, is it time then to form a joint waste authority for Warwickshire?
Thank you, Keith, for advanced notice of the question. Obviously, I can't speak for Nanteton Bedworth Borough Council. I don't, I'm not a member of that authority, unlike yourself, Keith. What you may be or may need to be aware of is that according to a number of factors in relation to the recycling market, which cause challenges to any local authority that have contracts to recycle, this fundamentally includes the price of the recyclate. And the two big factors are the reducing global demand for paper and secondly, the fall in oil prices. It's causing the users of recycled plastics to switch back to virgin polymers and the value of the materials fall alongside the cost of the oil. To a large extent, this influences the value of the material, was said. And that obviously impacts on the collection authorities, which both Warwickshire County Council and Nanteton Bedworth Borough Council and all the other districts are impacted by. We have to get the quality of the recyclables right or the processes are less inclined to accept the materials. And the factors that affect this are obviously the contamination with black plastic and the like. These challenges are being felt nationally, not just in Warwickshire. But in Warwickshire, we do work with the five collection authorities. We do have a Warwickshire Waste Partnership, which works very, very well in Warwickshire. And I believe that is the correct way to go at the moment. Because during our establishment since the Warwickshire Waste Partnership, we've done much to improve the performance of recycling in Warwickshire. In 2005, we were 24%. This year, we're 54% in Warwickshire and we're in the upper quartile nationally. So in answer to your question, I believe the Warwickshire Waste Partnership is the right way to go at the present time. And in answer to your earlier point, you do and have always attended the Warwickshire Waste Partnership with which I'm chair. And I believe I've always let you speak when appropriate to do so. I've never denied you that opportunity. So you're more than welcome to continue to come along, Keith.
Thank you very much. supplementary?
I'll leave that one.
And anybody got any other questions? I think the answer was no. Yes, sir, councillor Lewis.
The one that I asked earlier about the pollution outside Eton School.
No, no, not yet.
We're not there yet, sorry, apologies.
We move on to question three then, which one is councillor Condecor to ask councillor Peter Butland.
Right. Okay, yeah. This is about the Bemuda Bridge Connectivity Project. Commitments to totally oppose the Bemuda Bridge Connectivity Project have come from three of the top four candidates and a Nanteton General election candidate, from the Nanteton General election candidates. This includes a commitment to fully oppose the opening of the bridge to all traffic by a successful Conservative candidate in Nanteton. The project cannot be said now to have cross-party support. Will the portfolio holder now offer a suitable, sustainable alternative in the consultation to upgrade the bridge for pedestrians and cycle use only?
councillor Butland. Thank you councillor Condecor. I note that the question from councillor Condecor relates to a sustainable transport alternative option proposal for the Bemuda Connectivity Project, similar to what he put forward to the county council meeting held on Tuesday, the 28th of October, 2014. Pretty much the answer to that one is pretty much the same as what I'm going to give now. The county council did not support the alternative option proposal and endorsed the allocation of £3.202 million capital growth fund monies to enable the original proposals associated with the project as promoted in a business case to further investigate and subject to consultation, which includes improving the existing Bemuda Bridge over the A44 in Nanteton, connecting it to the local highway network and opening it for use by all traffic and road users. It is clear from the findings of the Bemuda Transport Bridge Feasibility Study, April 2014, undertaken by JMP Consultants Limited, that upgrading the bridge for pedestrians and cyclists use only would substantially weaken the business case for the project considerably in light of the following. Point one, bridge already caters for cycling and pedestrian movements. And therefore, the benefits derived from this are already in place. JMP Consultants Limited advised that establishing a business case for your proposal would be extremely challenging given the limited benefits available and therefore, as a cost-benefit ratio would be substantially lower, the cost-benefit ratio would be substantially lower. And it is almost certain that upgrading the bridge for pedestrians and cyclists use only would not be eligible to receive capital ground funding due to the weakness of the business case. I must also point out that the entire £3.7 million capital growth funding allocated to the proposed scheme was awarded on the merits of this business case, which demonstrated that the proposed scheme would have a benefit-cost-benefit ratio of 5.9 to 1, identified through Web Tag Assessment, the DFTs, web-based multimodal guidance and appraisal of transport projects. However, Web Tag does not take into account the benefits associated with employment growth factors. It can be viewed that the current benefit-cost ratio of 5.9 to 1 is an underestimate. The business case met the criteria of the capital growth fund and the growing place is infrastructure. As for the inputs from the kind of parliamentary candidates, the democratic elements of this proposal lies here in this chamber. And it was voted for unanimously pretty well by most of the members here. Thank you very much. supplementary?
Yes. The business case you mentioned was 5.9. At the time, people were talking about 4,000 jobs. At the time, people were talking about 4,000 jobs being created at Bermuda, depending upon this bridge opening. I have a letter from the Local Enterprise Partnership, says that's only going to be 200 jobs. And Holland and Barrett have just announced they're going to extend their hedge quarters there, not reliant upon this bridge being opened. So I can see there being no jobs dependent upon this bridge, because all the jobs that are being created have got alternative routes already at the time of the planning application. Will you rework the business case with real numbers?
Just draw your attention to what I just said, you obviously wasn't listening. The Web Tag of 5...
Stand up councillor Lewis.
The Web Tag does not take into account the benefits associated with employment growth factors. So the 5.91 was devoid of the employment factors anyway. So to kind of criticise us of the fact that we're kind of creating jobs, that was a benefit, that was something that was on top of the 5.9. Thank you very much. councillor Tandy?
Thank you, Chair. As I understand it, the current local plan proposals have got a huge swathe of industrial land that stretches right across the back of St George's Way, siding on to Coventry Road, and the whole of the one side of Gipsy Lane. So I think it's extremely unfair to say that there is to be no industrial locations within this particular area. However, I was extremely interested to read the wording of this proposal. Because what surprises me is that whilst I can't argue what councillor Condeco is saying about it being the top four in procuring votes for his Green vote, but then he actually polled more in the Borough Council election than he did in the general election, where he lost his deposit. So I don't see the point of that particular argument. What I would say, and ask the question of councillor Butlin, is are you aware councillor Butlin of the intensive consultation that is due to take place on this particular issue? And there are 10 venues already being announced for where those consultations will take place.
Okay, so yeah, I'm fully aware of that. I was brought to my attention all the venues and all the dates. And I hope that everybody here who was involved with this will attend and take a look at what we've come up with. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I lied, there's four questions. The fourth one is short, sharp and to the point. Thank you very much councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. Could the portfolio holder tell me what proportion of the council's procurement expenditure is spent with companies based in Warwickshire?
Certainly. I can confirm that 41.8% of the council's procurement expenditure was spent with companies based in Warwickshire in the last financial year.